Waiting and it is 6:02 and we have oral. And so we will now call this meeting of the mayor, border volunteer from the city of Natchez, order. I ask everyone would please stand. I'm going to put someone on the spot tonight. But if someone I know doesn't mind being put on the spot, Chief Calvert, Chief Green, would you offer our prayer for us this evening? And then we will follow that with our questions.
Bye, mates. God, thank you for bringing us together this evening. We have a lot of business to attend to. We have joyous occasions. We have things to be grateful for, especially when things are so uncertain across the land these days. We ask that you allow all of our decision-makers to make decisions with clear heads, clear consciences, and the best decisions for our city and for our community. We thank you for these things and more in the name of Jesus, Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Chief Green. And thank you for all you do and everyone at our Natchez Police Department. Let us now join together in our prayers.
To the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You made me see this. We'll ask the first of the business roll call.
Alderman Hall, here. Alderman Fraser, here. Alderman Irving, here. Alderman Davis, here. Alderman Murray, here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a question. Thank you so much. And I want the record to show that Alderman Fraser is enjoying a second honeymoon and that we all wish him and Mrs. Fraser well on their 50th wedding anniversary. Found out they were just kids when they got married. And we especially want to say congratulations to Mrs. Fraser. I think Alderman Fraser got the best of it, right? I told him that Saturday night. He didn't mind it. He actually showed it. I did. All right. We have minutes to approve. Madam Clerk, if you'll lead us in that.
Yes, we have one set of minutes for approval. It's the August 12, 2025 regular voting. So moved.
Second motion made by Alderman Smith and seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion. We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicated by saying aye. All opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next, we have a public hearing. I'm going to ask, do we have everything? Chief Green, Mr. Tingle, do we have everything we need for the public hearing to proceed?
Yes.
Okay. We have Bishop Oscar Davis here who has taxi service, mid-limousine service here in Natchez requesting to be licensed. And we, according to our orders, have to have a public hearing on this matter. And so at this time, I will ask for a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Alderman Irving has made the motion. Alderman Davis has seconded the motion. We are now in public hearing. I would like during this time to allow just two or three minutes, Bishop Davis, if you would, address the board about your business, about all that you do. And then we're going to ask the police chief and Mr. Tingle to make their recommendations and invite anyone in the public if they had any comments. So Bishop Davis, yes, you'll need to come to the podium so that you can have, so you can...
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Well, my name is Oscar Davis, a pastor in church here in the city of Natchez. And I want to say good evening to everybody this afternoon. I've been in business 20...
Can you speak into mine, please?
I've been in transportation business 23 years. So I'm not, I've been right here a long time. But I've just been, I live in the county, and so I decided to kind of branch out into the city and do a little bit more city work. But I've been in business for 23 years. Now, it would be my 24th year. And I'm a household bank right here when it comes down to transportation, you know? So I have hushes, limousines. So I tell people, I think you're sitting there for laying down. You know, your first ride and your final ride, you know, just depending on how you arrive. You know what I'm saying? But we wanted standard to get into the shuttle business because Gordon Brown went out of business. When he retired, then that's when different people started calling hotels and convention center. So that's why we invested in getting the shuttle bus. But I stay, I'm not in the taxi business. I'm in the limousine business. They're going to distinguish me. That's for taxi, limousine.
Thank you. And Bishop Davis, I appreciate your being here. And so honored to know. Do we have the mayor? Yes, Alderman Hall.
Bishop Davis, would you please sign in with your name and address?
Oh, yes. Thank you. And with that said, I would like for our police chief to come and speak on behalf of our police and planning and provide a recommendation, understanding that there are various steps that have to be met.
Could he share a little bit more about, well, maybe I didn't get it, but I was just going to ask him, could he share a little bit more about the limousine? I mean, because that changed the trajectory with from taxi. Because here we're seeing taxi and you're presenting a limousine. So could you expand on that a little bit more, please? Quickly.
Well, it's going to be limousine and shuttle. So it's not going to be taxis. It's going to be shuttle.
Okay. But it's on our agenda.
Right. So that's why we've been stating that, you know, we're not in the taxi business, you know? But years ago, I think they put me in the taxi, just in case I decided to go into taxi business. That's been years ago when Bitch Brown was here. But I came into business 2001. So would I tell you how long I've been around?
Yes.
Yeah. So, but that's the difference. I'm not a taxi. I'm not going to get about all hours a night coming. You know? So when I come, you got to pay.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Bishop Davis. Chief Green?
Thank you. This is for private transportation services. And, you know, we're just trying to make sure that we're standard across the board for everyone. But I did do a full background check on Bishop Davis, and he has no criminal history. And it would be my recommendation that we allow him to operate his business in the city of Natchez.
Thank you. Is all of this paperwork in order?
It is.
Insurance in order?
Yes. I have copies of all of that here.
And I see Mr. Tingle nodding. All right. Do we have any questions of Chief Green? At this point, we would invite any...
Are you the only one providing the service? Are there other members that are employed with you? Are you the only driver or...?
Each driver will have to be approved by us because we have to run a full background check on any person that is going to be in contact with the public.
Okay. Yes. That was the concern.
Yes. Each driver will have to have their own separate background check.
All right. But not come before us. We're approving the company.
No. This is the company and then we will...
Oh, and we need the full name of the company for our minutes. So we need the full name for our minutes and for our motion. While she's giving that to our clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak during this public hearing? As you see, none. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing. So motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion. We'll call for the question. All in favor of the motion indicated by saying aye. All opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. The name of the company?
First Class Limousine.
First Class Limousine. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve First Class Limousine to operate in the city of Natchez. Motion made by Alderman Irving, seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion. We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicated by saying aye. All opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you so much, Bishop Davis. Thank you.
Thank you for the service you provide.
We now come to city business. And our first item under city business is something that we are very excited about. And that is the swearing in of our municipal judge, Terrence Hunter. Everyone will remember that we had an official swearing in on the front steps of City Hall when he was made our interim judge. And...
I'm sorry. I'm trying to catch it. We made him, y'all made a motion to approve the service. Y'all did not make a motion to leave the public hearing.
Yes, we did. Alderman Smith made that motion and Alderman Davis seconded. I know we're going a little fast. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Okay. With that said, we'll return and I want to just share with everyone, you know, it was early in the year that it was announced that Judge Christina Dorothy had taken a job as an assistant district attorney. And upon her resignation, the mayor and board of aldermen voted to name a local attorney and Natchezian Terrace Hunter to be our municipal judge. He served for a few months as an interim judge. And a special election was called. The special election drew no opponents. And Mississippi law allows the city to dispense of having a special election when that candidate is unopposed. And so that made Terrence Hunter officially our municipal judge. And nobody's looking at me or listening to me. And Judge Hunter's beautiful wife, Leah. And we're just so proud of this young family. In fact, it has been said that a number of times already this year, that this is what excites us all about Natchez is to see young families returning home. In this case, Terrence brought a wonderful young lady from Starkville with him. And they are the future of this city. Young families and couples like the Hunters. But Terrence Hunter also comes from a long line of Natchezians. In fact, his grandfather is here. And I've got to say, Mr. Albert Hunter and his lovely wife, I believe, Mrs. Hunter, I want to give you just a hand clap. And holding the camera is actually Mrs. Hunter, Terrence's mother. You know, Mr. Hunter was longtime leader in the Natchez chapter of the NAACP. And he is a legend. And he is someone who's been on the front lines for many years. And it must be an exciting day. I know it was to see your grandson and this Hunter, to see your son sworn in as interim judge and today now as our newly elected municipal chair. Mr. Hunter grew up here, went to Trinity, graduated there, and went on to do so well. Actually, went to Tewolton, graduated from Ole Miss, came back, entered private practice, quickly started work as not only in criminal law, but also working in defense and also prosecution. Also, a number of opportunities in our various courts to get experience. And he's doing a great job now. So with that said, I believe Judge Hunter, you have someone here that we all know and we all like so much. This is our circuit, I'm sorry, Chancery Judge Vincent Davis. Chancery Judge Davis actually is known to us also as a former state senator and someone who does so much in our community. And Judge Davis, we are so glad to see you here to administer the oath to Judge Hunter. And so at that, I'm going to ask you to come over and please stand, if you would, where we can hear you through the microphone at that podium. Stay as close to it as you can. But please, please, I think they can hear you from right there. I tell you what, just go and hold up and speak real loudly. I'm turning the microphone this way. And we're now going to turn this over to the judges and to the judges' family.
Turn a little bit, make sure the newspaper...
I'm going to invite, I'm going to invite to show our support. I think the board of aldermen needs to stand beside them and take...
This is their time. This is their time.
All right. Well, when we get to taking pictures, I want everyone to know that this judge has our full support.
Before I come in here next, Judge Hunter, who happened to bring a Bible with him, tell me you did not, and you should. He's Christian. I want to put you here. Typically, what I would do is I would have you to put your left hand on the Bible. But in this instance, I'm going to ask you to put your left hand on this beautiful little child right here. Not as high up as the Bible, but I believe it's pretty close up there. Raise your right hand.
Yes. You want a Bible? We can get a Bible.
We don't need one. Some people just...
I don't want to hold up. See, we can wait. We can wait on the Bible.
Do I need to go get it?
While they're out, Judge Hunter, why don't you share a few words?
Yeah, I mean, briefly, in my time as the municipal court judge, I have gotten a crash course on a few things. Not only what law enforcement goes through, but what our clerks go through and what our other attorneys go through in our cases. But why Judge Davis knows it, attorneys have one viewpoint when the case. That's how I viewed cases, whether I was on the defense or prosecution of the case. But I've had the opportunity to see everything in full circle. And I have, I've always had an appreciation for law enforcement. I've always stated that there are two people who I think are severely underpaid, teachers and law enforcement. And I have seen what they do tirelessly every night, working 12-hour shifts. I talked to one officer where he was, you know, he was going back to back to back to back defending this city. And I have just gained a new level of appreciation for our law enforcement. I mean, I have to give it up to Chief Calvert-Green on what she's done with the city. I mean, she does an amazing job. And I just want to also give appreciation to our clerks. The crash course was done with help. The clerks have helped me learn this new system. Obviously, the law was always there. We know the law. But this new system, being able to meet people, help them when I can, be firm when I can, I think has allowed me to look at the practice of law differently, even in my private practice. Serving the city has been a true gem of my life. I've had my wife come up and watch me before. And she even enjoyed it. I mean, if you come to our municipal court, our Justice Court, you can put a TV in there and you'll make millions. You'll see anything in our town. And, you know, just having the opportunity to help people when I can, serve this city has been a great thing for me. I'm so glad that I have this support behind me. My wife, I don't know if y'all know her. I'm sure y'all have. She's probably been more bored than me in so many years. But she's the new downtown Natchez Alliance director, executive director. So not only am I busy, but this family is busy, especially with this 18-month-old in there. But I truly enjoy my brief time as municipal court judge, interim municipal court judge. I'm excited to be the full-time judge more fully.
Okay. Other side, other side. You can place your left hand, your left hand on the Bible, and raise your right hand. And I'm going to step back here so you can look this way so the cameras can see your face. Are you ready? Okay. You can put that to me. I, Terrence D. Hunter.
I, Terrence D. Hunter.
solemnly swear or affirm.
solemnly swear or affirm.
that I will administer.
that I will administer.
justice.
justice.
without respect.
without respect.
to persons.
to persons.
and do equal rights.
and do equal rights.
to the poor.
to the poor.
and to the rich.
and to the rich.
and that I.
and that I.
will faithfully.
will faithfully.
and impartially.
and impartially.
discharge and perform.
discharge and perform.
all the duties.
all the duties.
incumbent.
incumbent.
upon me.
upon me.
as municipal court judge for the city of Natchez.
as municipal court judge for the city of Natchez.
according to the best.
according to the best.
of my ability.
of my ability.
and understanding.
and understanding.
agreeably.
agreeably.
to the Constitution.
to the Constitution.
of the United States.
of the United States.
and the Constitution. and the Constitution.
and the Constitution.
and laws.
and laws.
of the state of Mississippi.
of the state of Mississippi.
So help me God. Congratulations.
All right. We're going to get a quick picture with the alderman and the mayor. And then we're going to set aside and allow for pictures with the family. Are we good? And we're always looking for someone to take this picture.
I got it. I got it.
You got it. But we also could ask... When you're trying to get attention.
Yeah, he put his robe back on.
Thank you, Judge. You and I?
No, no, I'd be out. Top 40 under 40.
Picture. Take a picture.
Okay.
Thank you.
Some people move on this side of the street.
She could come forward, she could, yeah, bring her ear a little bit. Yeah. You're amazing from now on. I said that last time.
Good. You're right here with us. One night.
One night.
All right. Judge Hunter. All right, we now are going to continue on and I'm, I'm going to ask the indulgence of Mr. Parker, who is next on the agenda, while I go ahead and skip something else because we've got a number of citizens here and our citizens are our customers. We don't want to make you wait. And so we're going to skip down to the mayor's report and update on the group home issues that are happening in single-family neighborhoods in Natchez because I know a number of you have come for that reason. Rather than have you sit through the whole meeting to get to that point, I want to just go ahead and give you a report. And this is also as a means of informing the Port Alderman of some issues that we're dealing with and also the press, so that the press will know. It was, and I will never forget, it was actually right before Memorial Day when Ms. Deering came to my office to report a situation developing in Natchez that I needed to know about. And, and Ms. Deering, thank you for coming up and we appreciate you being here tonight and we honor your late husband, Bob Deering, who will always be a beloved believer in the eyes of Natchez and also today having you here. It appears that something's been happening in Natchez off and on over the period of years that is actually happening in other cities across Mississippi and we're just now really starting to come to understand what this is. And it is where individuals actually moved, sorry, I moved that around. And it's actually where individuals have been doing something where they buy homes in single-family neighborhoods and they move individuals in and it really overnight becomes sort of a group home. Now, I want to say this, I have a brother who is special needs and lives in a state-sanctioned group home in North Mississippi, is extremely well-run and everyone there is well-cared for. We have group homes in Natchez that I understand are very well-run and the individuals there are very well-cared for. We understand that in other parts of the state, this is the case as well. But sadly, we've had some instances where individuals who have bought homes have actually moved in some vulnerable adults and we have reason to believe that those adults are not being cared for properly. We have actually had individuals who have been eyewitness to elder abuse and vulnerable adult abuse and violation of Mississippi's very extensive Vulnerable Adults Protection Act. And this concerns me, being that I have a family member that, you know, is, is very special to me, but it also should concern all of us that we would want the best for all of our citizens, especially our special needs citizens. Natchez is known for our special needs community. Just a week ago, we honored those who participated in Special Olympics right here in this very chamber. And so, understanding that we have some individuals who have bought homes in the name of an LLC who have moved some special needs individuals into these homes and we understand that proper care is not being given, that yards are being allowed to go untended, windows even covered with cardboard so that one cannot see what is taking place inside, individuals who have been seen cowering in a fetal position on the driveway of these homes while individuals in authority stand over them yelling at the top of their lungs, individuals allowed to sit in the middle of streets without any supervision posing a danger to themselves and others. This will not happen in Natchez. It will not happen and it should not happen anywhere, but it will not happen here under our watch. We are very grateful that we've had an opportunity to visit with some of these concerned citizens and some of you who are here. We also are very grateful that we have received assistance from an attorney for Mississippi Municipal League, an attorney dealing with this situation right now in another city that is dealing with this problem. And we have also talked to other mayors and alderpersons in other cities. I'm not going to name the cities. And I'm very grateful, Alderman Maroney, that you have stepped in very quickly because a lot of this is happening in your ward. Alderman Smith, you also have dealt with this in prior administrations and you have shared your concerns because some of this is happening in your ward. Our city planner has been able to pull our ordinance, the city attorney has helped with this, and we have found that the current ordinance pertaining to special exceptions in R1, R2 areas requires that any facility that is operating as a home for adults with special needs and in need of special care must acquire a special exception from the city. Now, this doesn't mean that the city's not going to allow them to operate. We believe that anyone wanting to provide care to those who are very special in our community should have that opportunity. But what it will allow is it will allow our planning commission to understand when these cases arise, to be sure that those individuals who are being housed in these locations are being properly cared for. And so we had a meeting this morning and our team is now drafting an ordinance and we're getting help from others. It's actually not even an ordinance, it's language that will be added to the existing ordinance that will provide certain conditions for that special exception to be granted. Number one, we need to make sure that fire code is followed for the safety of these individuals. Number two, we need to make sure that Mississippi's Vulnerable Adult Protection Act is followed and that these individuals are properly cared for and treated with dignity and respect. We also are going to ensure that the properties, with the help of our code enforcement, observing that the properties are maintained to respectable appearance and sanitary condition, both inside and out. We are also going to provide that the individuals have to abide by state laws and local laws, ordinances, and also present themselves as good neighbors. And then lastly, we're going to make sure that any violations can not only be reportable to the proper authorities, especially in cases where vulnerable adults are abused, but also that any violations of these conditions could jeopardize the special exception and allow the planning commission to revoke that special exception. We are beginning work, actually, we have begun today, work on that additional language that will be added to the ordinance that's already on the books and I'm hopeful that we will be able to present that as soon as our next meeting. I just spelled it out, it's just a matter of getting it all through legalese and then making the presentation. And so with that said, I can answer any questions the Alderman might have. This is not a public hearing, so we aren't going to get involved in public commentary unless the board wants to allow one spokesperson for the group. If anyone would like to say anything, we could allow a spokesperson.
I would agree to that so that we would have some background information, you know.
Okay.
I would like that if anyone would follow.
Is there anyone that would like to act as a spokesperson for the group to either corroborate what I've shared or add to it?
I would.
Okay, with that said, I'd like to ask for a motion to allow Mrs. Deering, Mrs. Shelley Deering.
The vote.
Alderman Irving has made the motion and Alderman Maroney has seconded. Do we have any discussion? We'll call for the question. We'll see who, we'll vote all in favor of the motion indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion ayes. Ms. Deering, if you would, approach the podium and share what you'd like to share, but we'll ask you to please keep your commentary to about three to five minutes, understanding we have other items on our agenda.
Well, I personally would.
Oh, and we do need your address for our minutes, I'm sorry.
Name of the person.
Sorry.
Okay, I'm Shelley Deering, my address is 305 Bella Rose, Montella Parkway, Natchez. Now, did you want me to?
Just anything you'd like to add to what I've already said.
Well, we hurt my neighbor across the street, witnessed it before I did this incident and apparently this individual got out of the home unsupervised and apparently that had been up the day before that happened, another neighbor had witnessed him in his yard, not knowing where he was. And then he was in the middle of the street, no one could get, get him up, had to call the police and still could not get him up. He laid, laid there in the street, so I don't know how long before I became aware. And then they, I think the police finally got up, got him up to the doorway of the home. He was cowered on the ground, I assume it was one of the owners. He was in, in a position, cowering, fluttering his hands, trying to get her to stop yelling at him. This went on unbeknownst to me, the yelling was, oh, 15, 20 minutes, good time. And then I became aware when I dove, I had let out, started barking at what was going on. I went out the front door and I witnessed it myself, this extreme hollering at this individual and he was just fluttering his hands trying to make her go away. And I, and other than that, I mean, they're quiet in the house, there's nothing, but there's nobody paying attention to what these people are going through, whether they're being treated or not. And what I saw was not on how he was being treated. And I just think there ought to be something in place that they, you have to know what's going on in these homes, how they've been cared for. And there are nursing homes that are in residential areas, some other, we don't know what's going on in these places. And that's when I approached you about it. And hopefully something can be done to have some sort of supervision in place for this people. And hopefully we can get something passed to take care of this.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Deering. And it's my understanding that we could very well have anywhere from half a dozen or more of these situations right now with others possibly in the works. And, and I want to make sure everyone understands that we want proper care for those who need proper care and what we are against is anyone or any business or LLC that would take advantage of vulnerable individuals, that would take their money and provide for them substandard housing where they can't even look out a window or even have a yard that is cut. It's just unheard of and I'm very grateful that you brought it on.
And my impression of this is they're just in these homes with nothing to do. I've never, other than that instance, I've never seen them out in the yard or anything. And as I said, after I became aware, this moment went on another 20-some minutes, just screaming and hollering at this man.
And we have now.
The only way they could take care, they got an ambulance, cop, they got an ambulance. It's the only way they can get the situation calmed down.
We, we now have another, a number of these instances that were reported in other areas and neighbors who have had to witness things that are just really sad. So thank you so much. Do we have any questions from Ms. Deering? All right.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you all of you and please help share with others exactly what we're, we're doing. All right. With that said, Mr. Parker, thank you for being patient with us and I understand you have.
I love for y'all.
Yeah, they're our customer, now we're your customer.
Yeah.
But you're our customer too, if you didn't.
Guess I made a focus bench, you know?
How are you?
Okay, after that wonderful introduction of the new judge and then hearing West Toronto, people that can't help themselves.
Um, I have a long envelope.
I think you got it back.
Oh, I'm just handing out, I'm not even breathing. So that's getting the last.
Here, Alderman, listen, listen here.
Listening to.
Thank you.
Listen to, I got, yeah. Listen to all that that we just listened to.
His name is Alderman.
I didn't.
Have you got that for them? neighbors who have had to witness things that are just really sad. So thank you so much. Do we have any questions from Ms. Dearing? All right.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you all of you, and please help share with others exactly what we're doing. All right. With that said, Mr. Parker, thank you for being patient with us, and I understand you have.
I love for y'all.
Yeah, they're our customer, now we're your customer. But you're our customer too, as you did yesterday.
Guess I made a focus bench, you know?
How are you?
Okay, after that wonderful introduction of the new judge, and then hearing what's coming, people that can't help themselves.
Um, I have a long envelope.
I think you got it back.
Oh, I'm just handing out, I'm not even breathing.
Here, Alderman, listen, listen here.
Listening to.
Thank you.
Listening to, I got, yeah. Listen to all that we just listened to.
His name is Alderman. Have you got that for down there?
Here, here, this is what it is. It's all got the same. All right. Is your health insurance representative, it's my duty to test the waters of the work. So I started early this year, and what you're looking at, I reached out to a broker's outfit called Stealth Partner Group, and what you're looking at is an email I got yesterday, which shows that there were approximately ten brokers we approached about the reinsurance, and you can see most of it have declined. There are a few that are pending, but according to Mr. Walker, there's not a lot of hope there. And typically, you see in these comments, uncompetitive rates, unable to match contract terms, ongoing large claims. The reason I'm presenting this to you is for an agent to come before you and say, hey, I've done my due diligence, and just say it, that's baloney. I want y'all to see that I've really been hustling. Some good news, the gap plan rate stayed the same, the cross-third-party administrative ratio stayed the same. We do have an increase on the reinsurance, which is why I've been hustling, trying to see if I can do better. The increase is about thirty-four thousand a year, which that translates to about twelve percent. These days, we're looking at in twenty-six, nationwide, the trend, if you're a healthy group, the trend for rate increases is looking like nine percent. What is trend? And I go over this with y'all more than once, but trend is when so-called experts, and most of them are, I'm assuming, look at the cost of medical care, the cost of drugs. As we know, we're all living a lot longer, we have amongst us people who have fallen from pancreatic cancer and come out the other side because of the new drugs we have. There's a new medicine for gout that costs thirty-two thousand dollars a bottle. I never knew gout could be that expensive, but fortunately, on our group, the City of Natchez group, the numbers are looking encouraging. There's a pretty good downturn in claims right now, although there's potential for some claims, and that's why you see on this Stealth Partner Group declining due to ongoing large claims. My recommendation would be that we go ahead and renew this contract, it's working really well, spoken with Megan about what she has budgeted in for health insurance, we seem to be falling under that threshold with the renewal. We're still with, and you know Mr. LaCoste, Jules LaCoste, forty years in the business. And I called Jules this morning, I said, Jules, I said, my grandmother always told me, if you don't ask, you don't know. I said, can you find a point or two for me somewhere? Can you give me some relief? And he said, Fred, when we put the numbers in the computer, the renewal came out twenty-eight percent, and due to our long history, I'm putting it where it is. Now, one might say, that's a lot of money, it is a lot of money, but let's remember, we're talking about a hundred sixty employees and their families, works out to about twenty-six, twenty-seven hundred dollars a month. I know it's a lot of money. However, I think it's a fair renewal, and especially when I got this, and just, it always feels bad when no one wants to take it as a dance. However, I think Mr. LaCoste has done a good job, and the fact that the other two legs of our business are static, that we should move forward and carry on, and pray that as we go forward, the declining health claims continue, and we get more people involved in the healthy youth. One other thing I'd like to mention, on the healthy youth, what across is beginning with adults, rather than on your healthy youth, run a glucose test, which gives a snapshot in time, they're going to run an AC1, which gives a more comprehensive view of your potential diabetic problems, et cetera. So we're looking forward to some help there. And I would like to open myself to your berating comments or your comments in general.
We'll acknowledge any comments we have, Alderman Maroney.
You said the trend was twenty-eight percent.
No, not the trend. When Mr. LaCoste.
He was saying twenty-eight.
When they put the claims history, what drugs are being used, that the renewal, he said, we were looking at twenty-eight percent, but here.
We're going to be able to get twelve.
Yes. Now, and let me, to that point, can I say this, when you have a long history, and Dan knows this from being an insurance business in the past, when you have a long history with somebody, they're not trying to make a big bang of bucks off of you right there, you've got a long history, they're trying to shake out what's fair for the City of Natchez, and not gouge the City of Natchez. And I think he did a good job of it.
That's what I'm saying, is if the numbers came out twenty-eight, and we're going to be able to get it a twelve percent increase instead of twenty-eight percent increase.
And that's.
Somebody's helping us out there.
I would say it really shows, we've had this since 2020, and it really shows that we have been a good client for the reinsurance provider, and.
Our claims are looking better.
And we, and we've also had a great agent.
Well, thank you.
And I've got to brag on you, that even with this number, you realize you're still saving us hundreds of thousands from where we were in 2020 before we got you?
I appreciate that, man.
In fact, the individual who handled the insurance before you, even with this twelve percent increase, we are still over eighty percent less than what he had quoted in 2020 on his reinsurance, you realize that?
No, I didn't.
I shouldn't say it.
I remember the numbers a long time ago.
Listen, I just have to say, it's been tremendous progress for the City of Natchez. It, in 2020, helped us to do some things, and it's so good to work with people who definitely have your back in your best interest, and please tell Mr. LaCoste thank you.
I will, I will do so.
Alderman Irving.
Thank you. I wanted to inquire that, you said that healthy youth.
Yes, ma'am.
Are they paying for the glucose, am I hearing you correct?
They'll pay for the AC1 test as opposed to the glucose test. Which gives a better read on.
It does.
Potential for diabetes.
Diabetes, yes, it does, okay.
They still have no cure for terminal violence, which I'm really mad about.
And then my other question is, you said with a hundred sixty employees and four families, twenty-six dollars per month, is that what you're saying?
No, 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 no. The rate increase on that, on the reinsurance portion of it comes out to about twenty-six hundred dollars a month for the, you know, if you broke it out on a monthly basis.
Okay.
Because.
Or, or as many employees as we have.
He said a hundred sixty.
I would like to, at this time, ask for a motion to approve the renewal. So a motion has been made by Alderman Davis, and Alderman Maroney actually was right there with, I'm sorry, hold on. With that, do we have any further discussion?
No.
We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you, and I hope to see all of you.
Sure, Alderman Irving.
What about now with supplemental? The supplemental?
Oh, it stays the same.
Okay, supplemental stays the same.
Yes, ma'am, the vision and demo, the prices, I got a two-year rate lock on that when I did that last year.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Alderman Hall.
Yes, sir, is this, is this motion to renew all three, or just one in particular?
This is the one being presented at this time. Are you, are you prepared for a motion to renew all the others?
Yes, because the price, we.
Yeah.
A lot to me.
I tell you what, what I'd like to do is ask Alderman Davis to amend his motion.
Why can't we amend the?
Because really, just for our minutes' sake, we really need just one motion on the insurance, and Alderman Hall, I'm glad you brought that to our attention. Alderman Maroney, are you good with amending the motion? I'm going to rehold the vote we just had, if that's all right.
I'm going to amend it, add the other two.
Yes, we're adding all of the insurance lines in that motion, and so I'll ask for a vote again, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. And Alderman Irving, I'm glad you asked that question. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.
Mr. Parker, thank you so much. Mr. Johnson, you're recognized.
Evening, Mayor and Board.
Good evening.
I'm proud to be with a grant of four of mine, too much change, much of it was given out. Pride building, ground for revolving loan program, Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality. The City of Natchez has been received of three documents associated with the ground for revolving loans applied for earlier this year. Documents received and needing approval are as follows. Ground filled agreement order pursuant to Mississippi Ground for Voluntary Cleanup and Redevelopment Act, created by Mississippi Code 4945-1. Execution of this agreement, the city and future owners will be granted liability protection upon completion of the cleanup of the site, and this will also allow the pride building project to be eligible, or allowed from DEQ's ground for revolving loan program. Staff in concert with PPM Consultants is requesting a motion to approve the ground for agreement or further requirements of the act.
It's a pleasure of the Board.
So I'm going to second.
Motion made by Alderman Hall, seconded by Alderman Davis. Alderman Maroney. Discussion. We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to the vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item.
Environmental covenant notice of ground for agreement pursuant to Uniform Environmental Covenant Act, Mississippi Code 8923-1 revised 2008, for the former pride building, the City of Natchez owns the tract of land of 116 North Pearl Street, Natchez. By execution of this covenant, the city and future owners will be granted liability protection upon completion of removal of contaminants, groundwater usage prohibited, no wells may be installed, and no excavation, drilling, or activities that could create exposure to any residual contaminants after cleanup will be allowed without DEQ approval. Compliance reports will begin October 31st, 2026, and that notice DEQ requires support conveyed as a property to another. Staff in concert with PPM Consultants is requesting a motion to approve environmental covenant further requirement of the ground for revolving loan program.
It's a pleasure of the Board. Alderman Hall has made the motion, seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion.
Yes.
Alderman Irving.
And I just wanted to ask, with these things, to just ask you a question, whether or not the city has to put up a percentage, or there is no?
That is the next action item, not the one we're currently in.
Okay, okay.
Right, that's the next action.
I'll call for the question.
You're right, because I have it on the line.
I'll call for the question. We'll proceed to the vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. All opposed nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item.
Ground for revolving loan fund agreement. The City of Natchez has been received of this loan agreement, a summary of the loan terms are as follows. The loan amount is up to five hundred thousand dollars, the loan rate is one-half percent interest with a ten-year payback, and a loan discount of four hundred thousand dollars. Monthly payments will be three thousand four eighteen and six cents beginning October 1st, 2026, which is based on a five hundred thousand dollar borrowed, but discounted twenty percent, or a discounted loan principal of four hundred thousand dollars. The cost share requirement is twenty percent or one hundred thousand dollars, but for DEQ can be in the form of income services performed by the City of Natchez, i.e. construction of the proposed parking lot facility on the site of the former pride building. Happing or constructing parking lot must be completed by September 25th, 2030. Staff in concert with PPM Consultants is requesting a motion to approve the ground for revolving loan agreement with the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality.
Pleasure of the Board. Motion made by Alderman Hall.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Maroney. And I want to say this also, is in the event that we need the extra funds, we very likely won't need the entirety of this loan, it is insurance, because we do have a 1.2 million dollar.
Rounded.
Rounded grant from the EPA that is part of this project. Also, this is a very generous program that has been provided to us by DEQ. I think it's not one that has been around.
We are the first.
I thought we were.
And we do need to commend DEQ staff, DEQ commissioners, and PPM for working diligently to get the term, but we don't receive it.
We are the first, and also, there is an opportunity as the project moves forward to have some more forgiveness.
Yes.
So these are great terms, I would say, great terms, and very vital to moving forward with the redevelopment in that area, and we all know we're talking about the Elmo Town. Alderman.
I just wanted to bring up, you said the hundred thousand dollars per MDEQ can be in the form of econ services.
Correct.
And that will come from our public works department. Where would that come from?
Right now, my understanding is of building of the parking lot, because, I mean, it is a requirement, I think, for the developers of the Elmo Hotel, correct?
And we will be working with also the State of Mississippi and the State Development Authority, when we get to that point, it may end up being very similar to how we built the parking lot in Las Vegas back in 2021.
Which involves econ services from the public works. And that's why I say, and I'm just going back, that's why staffing is so important, because how can we get this job done in a time to matter if you don't have the proper staff?
That's it, that's it.
That's why it comes back to the budget, that's what I'm looking at, that's how I know that I made it.
With that, I'd like to call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to the vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item.
I guess continuing with the pride building, section 106, review. Staff is requesting a motion to compensate the historic X Foundation's three thousand dollars to repair, their report included written history and historic photographs of the pride building, current requirements of the section 106 review, and agreed upon mitigation measures for the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality and Mississippi Department of County District.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Hall, seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion. We'll call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to the vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. I want to just say, stay tuned for some good news coming tomorrow with regards to the Elmo project. So, next item.
Proposed retail development station to Walmart Supercenter Community Infrastructure Program, federal regional authority. That was requesting to revise the local match previously approved by the Natchez Board of Alderman from a request of four hundred thousand dollars to five hundred thousand dollars, noting that there was a misinterpretation of the plan provided for proposed super four, i.e. construction of a dedicated turn lane in Gress Egress to serve both proposed retail development and the Walmart Supercenter. The local match will come to the city's portion of the self-proceeds of thirty-plus acre parcel to the real estate development company. Of note, the city is requesting one million dollars from the DRA for this transportation enhancement application. Please, the Board.
A pleasure of the Board. We're applying for grants. Second, to make the development happen next to Walmart. Thank you, Alderman Smith has made the motion, Alderman Davis has seconded the motion. Discussion. Yes, Alderman Hall.
Where was the misrepresentation or misinterpretation of the plans?
Depending on how you look at the plans and going north and south, that's how it was done, I think, when it was originally presented, it was just an accident. You can interpret. Uh, you can interpret the direction one way or interpret it the other. I'd have to show you the plan, I guess, for you to see how it could be misinterpreted, because we looked at it one way and the engineer looked at it a different way, which is basically just cost estimate. So that's how it was done, it was just a mistake, that's all.
Was it, I just have, just to piggyback off my question, was it just recently or when this was originally brought to us?
A day or two later, it was determined.
Okay.
After, after the, the vote was, uh, the presentation was made, I was having a conversation, and that's when it was really determined that it was a misinterpretation.
I, I do want to also say for the record that we will be seeking other funds, including funds from the NDA for this project. And it's my understanding that some of those funds can also be used or matched with the. And so, we, we should be very successful in securing the funds needed for that match. Uh, we'll call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item, Mr. Johnson.
Natchez Convention Center wall graphics. Two thousand twenty-two Convention Center G O B, staff in council with consulting architect Wake after Duncan is requesting motion to seek quote this for the printing and installation of the specified timeline and wall graphics and artwork for the main quarters of the Natchez Convention Center.
It was a pleasure of the Board.
So I'm going to second.
Uh, motion made by Alderman Maroney, seconded by Alderman Davis. And you'll, you'll see here scrolling, uh, artwork that is intended for a particular area there in the Convention Center. Uh, the timeline, uh, very beautifully designed plan, uh, showing the history of Natchez. Also, if we could go back in just a moment to the artwork, uh, we are so blessed to have internationally loved, um, Mississippi artist, Wild Waters, who has a studio right here in Natchez as of a few months ago, and, uh, and is working with us, uh, to actually, uh, make available these beautiful prints that will be showcased in the Convention Center. And so, uh, we're just very, very grateful. Uh, at this time, I would like to call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item.
Natchez Convention Center purchase of furniture. Quote this for the purchase installation of specified furniture were to be received today at ten o'clock at eight a.m. at the request of several of our local vendors. The deadline for receipt quote was extended until Thursday, ten a.m. No actions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, um, we are so grateful for all of you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, all of you.
You're not dealing with.
Yes, ma'am, I am.
I was asking questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Down from my.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm still receiving calls, were you able to reach out to the?
Actually, yes, over a week ago when you mentioned it, and they called today. Uh, I guess there was some type of, of lag between, uh, uh, with Mr. Clarence and staff. So, I spoke to them today and they are investigating it, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we now come to our next report, Chief. Uh, and I'm not sure he is here. You were hiding behind the column. Chief Arrington is there, I'm so grateful that you are here. And Chief Arrington, you and your family have been in our prayers and in our hearts in the, uh, passing of your sister. And I know the funeral was just this weekend, and, uh, and so, just know that we, uh, hold you all in, in love and in prayer. Uh, thank, I, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, sir.
And you're now recognized.
So, um, I came today, so we all know, I came to you earlier this year to have the Homeland Security Grant to outfit the rescue truck. Um, so we have received all of our equipment in, and it's been installed, I have, uh, pictures up here for you now. Uh, so, we installed new lights and sirens. Um, we installed it right there, that's an inverter, so we can charge our battery powered equipment. Uh, we have new radio inside the vehicle that works now, um, and a bed slide to hold all of the equipment. Now, this vehicle that we're using, as y'all will see, have the Homeland Security on it, this is a vehicle that we got from Homeland Security back in two thousand and five, it is a, uh, Dodge thirty-five hundred truck. We've been able to keep it in great shape because of the parameters that we had in it, it's got less than forty thousand miles on it right now. Ma'am.
Absolutely beautiful.
Um, and the vehicle that we are replacing was a, uh, old ambulance that was donated from, you know, way back, it's like a nineteen ninety-seven, with excess of a hundred and seventy thousand miles on it. So this is going to be a much better vehicle to handle the equipment that we have. Everything's grown and gotten heavier over time, more equipment. Uh, so this vehicle is going to set us up to do some good things. Uh, right now, the vehicle is, uh, awaiting one last little service. I did reach out to some of our local vendors to get new badging on it. Uh, I'm just waiting on them to get back with me, but in the meantime, this vehicle will soon be in service. Uh, hopefully y'all have to see it, but, uh, it will be out in service very soon, so, uh, thankful to Homeland Security for everything and, uh, ready to roll.
It's great, just beautiful, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, Alderman Hall.
Chief, I want to offer my condolences to you, I just speak with Mrs. Arrington, today your sister died.
Yes, she told me. She told me, thank you so much, thank you so much.
Oh, spirit, could I?
Yes, all of you.
This is my first hearing of it, so you do have my condolences, you're the family, we'll keep you in prayer.
I appreciate that.
Mm-hmm. And if you don't mind me asking her name?
Sonya Brown, pretty. Uh, she was Sonya Brown, that's, she was the one married in that.
And, and tonight will adjourn with her.
Could we add three vows to this, please?
Oh, definitely, I was actually going to say a little about that during my report, but we, everyone.
Y'all have any, uh, other questions?
No, that's wonderful. Yep, thank you.
Thank you so much. Oh, uh, one of the things that I, I didn't mention, uh, is this vehicle now has the state-of-the-art lighting. We were missing lighting on it before, so we have state-of-the-art lighting on it now that doubles as emergency lighting and scene lighting, uh, to, to light up the area that we're working here, so. Uh, Jackson Communications was really, really good to us.
Yes. We're so grateful for this grant, could you share again, um, how much the grant was?
Uh, the total grant was about thirty-eight thousand dollars. Um, and that was for some equipment, some rescue equipment to use, and then all of this, the radio, the lights and sirens, uh, the bed slide and all the installations.
Well done, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Chief, God bless you. Uh, Mr. Porter, Ryan Porter, you're now recognized.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Aldermen and Women. I think you should all have a short packet in front of you. It's only three slides of the twenty-five slides that I'm going to run through really fast. So feel free to stop me if you have any questions. First order on the agenda. Staff request travel to Orlando, Florida on September fifteenth through eighteenth to attend the National Parks and Recreation Association's annual conference. Both myself and Dylan Butler have been selected to represent Natchez as panelists in the discussion led by Dr. Kim Beeson of Ole Miss and David DeQuilla from Moss Point, Mississippi. The title is, "We Built the Annual Report for Vote Review Together, Now Let's Customize Our Parks Metric Sandbox for Strategic Impact." The panel includes representatives from Orlando, Mississippi, all the way to Tuscaloosa, Alabama.
Okay, pleasure of the Board. Motion made by Alderman Hall to approve. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Maroney has made the second, do we have discussion? Alderman Irving.
I'm just asking, who's the third person to be in charge of parks?
That's going to fall on the same person that fell on last year when we went to the annual conference.
Who's that person?
It's going to be, uh, Randy Woods.
Is he your only person? Is Mr. Woods your only person?
He is my only full-time staff member. And I'll be happy to provide his contact information.
Thank you.
All right. And I'll call for the question. I'll call for the question.
Oh.
The question's been called, we'll proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item.
Yes, I don't have this entire presentation in front of me, so I'm just going to have to speak up and project. Uh, basically, this is a plan for both tennis and pickleball to coexist. It's no secret the popularity of pickleball, they're pretty much taking over the world. Being a disc golfer, I'm not happy with it, because we can no longer say that we're the fastest growing sport in America. Next slide, please. Uh, we want to enhance our facility to serve everyone. Children, high school athletes, young adults, seniors, and families. Next slide. You can see our current course, court conditions, that is a dollar bill laying vertical in one of the cracks on the court. So they need immediate attention for both safety and, uh... Okay, so we've identified some potential funding for the tennis portion, and that's where the, the waters get a little muddy. We find that, um, several agencies and organizations are willing to don't, to, to fund projects fifty percent match if it's specifically for tennis or specifically for pickleball. So that just shows you the fight is, is really there, really happening. Next slide. Pickleball's popularity gender split sixty, forty, that's what stood out to me there. These are dated infographics, but it shows you how, how many million players there are in tennis over two years versus pickleball over two years. Next slide, we'll kind of roll through these pretty quickly. Age-wise, distribution, uh, first column, I don't know if you can see it, on your left, is six to seventeen, eighteen to thirty-four, thirty-five to fifty-four, fifty-five to sixty-four, and sixty-five plus. So not only are seniors playing pickleball, not only are young adults playing, everyone's playing with that, except for me. So I come to you with a completely unbiased approach with this. Um, and you can see from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-three, they've tracked participation in tennis and pickleball. And tennis, obviously, it's not going anywhere, so we want to preserve that. But you can see that tennis is more seasonal, and these pickleballers are, for lack of a better word, are hardcore, they, they live it, they breathe it, they drink it. Uh, and also, you can see Mississippi, that's number of courts per state in two thousand twenty-two. We are in the very lightest shade of blue, so that shows you one of two things. You could argue that we're not as densely populated as other areas, but my argument would be is we're behind the times. Typically twenty years behind, uh, the rest of the country. And sometimes Natchez is a little bit further behind the state. So this is our opportunity to, to be ahead of the times. Let's roll through this. Showing you economic impact potential. Most important is the next clip. It's time for us to customize what we already have in an effort to expand our facilities in the future. Next slide. Of course, we, we, we can't do away with tennis, and we're not proposing that we do away with tennis, so don't, don't misinterpret that. We know that in here, some of Frankie Spence has had countless years fostering the youth of the city and providing a positive outlook for them. Excellent. Okay, so this is just an aerial view of our current facilities, you can see our new tennis courts on the very bottom. See how pretty they are, we want everything to look like that. Next slide. And this is my attempt at visualizing graphically. You can see that our current pickleball is on the far right of the left-hand picture, the one through six. And it's kind of clustered there, and that's, that's by design. Next slide. That is an aerial view of pickleball courts in action. Next slide. So both sports, what we determined is both sports need dedicated space. If you can see here, we have lines on top, top of lines on top of lines. So you can't tell whether it's for pickleball, for junior tennis, or for tennis. And so, according to USDA or USA, USA Pickleball, these are not acceptable for any sanctioned league play. And I would be willing to bet that you couldn't even play a high school tennis match on that court. Next slide. So our proposed plan, um, is to either, is to resurface all tennis courts, including the two at Ward Natchez, so let's not forget those, because they're very important.
Right, they are.
And we also have, um, two, a couple of options, we can either resurface dedicated pickleball courts on two or three tennis courts. Next slide. Next slide. I would worry with the dimensions, it's very important to show how the puzzle fits together. Standard court dimensions for pickleball are twenty feet by forty-four feet. For casual play, you need at least five feet of buffer between courts, but I think, let's be honest, that's not much room for period aggressive play. So turning standards have increased by seventy feet, but that would be, in my opinion, base, or sideline to fence. But from sideline to sideline, you need even more space so that players aren't colliding. So I think we found a happy medium, I think eight would be the, the perfect number for that. Next slide, next slide. Okay, so resurfacing priority areas. Uh, the high priority areas in red indicate that there is structural damage and cracks need to be refilled and/or posts need to be replaced. Several years of tension in that, the posts actually wane and crack. So, uh, the moderate areas, that's going to require nothing but, uh, the resurfacing, which is the paint, uh, the abrasive material, and the line. Low priority, obviously, brand-new tennis courts. So that wouldn't need much work. Next slide. So a couple of options here, and then there are pros and cons to, to both, and trust me, I've stayed up countless nights trying to figure out the best, the best route forward here. In option A, that's what we were looking at originally, um, it would create a dedicated pickleball area, but it would limit the potential growth of pickleball in the future. And also, we just built a brand-new Lamborghini, why would we want to change the paint color even after that? Option B, would increase pickleball's potential growth, because it would give more courts, and there's a reason that there's ten there as opposed to eight, and it all has to do with the size of the slab. That'll come in, in, uh, one of the next slide. And we've also identified some, some very generous donors that are willing to provide private funding to help offset the resurfacing portion of the project for the pickleball area. Times, obviously, it eliminates three tennis courts as opposed to just two. And that's, it's real. Next slide. Okay, so the dimensions, the new tennis court is one-twenty by one-twenty, that's one-twenty feet by one-twenty feet. You can see that the existing slab where the tennis, where the pickleball courts are currently is one-twenty by two oh five. So if you take half of that, it's a seventeen and a half foot difference. That means that if we use the required space for eight pickleball courts, which is exactly one-twenty by one-twenty with eight-foot buffers on, if we were to overlay that, it would extend into the third tennis court. So if that's the case, why not add two more pickleball courts and maintain just one tennis court? Next slide. Cost analysis, uh, this is based on one estimate that we've received from Universal Court Works out of Brookhaven, Mississippi, we could potentially get these down. You're looking at courts one through eight, that's a sixty thousand dollar price tag. Pickleball courts one through eight would be thirteen point two thousand, half of that, six point six, this is of a private match, and then ten thousand four hundred. And then ten thousand four hundred at North Natchez Park. Total project cost eighty-three thousand six hundred. City would be responsible for coming up with seventy-seven thousand dollars. It's very important to note that private funding will also cover an additional twenty-seven point three thousand, approximately, for pickleball site amenities, including professional nets, backboards, and power racks. Next slide. Option B, cost analysis, basically the same price for the first two that I mentioned, um, but ten of the pickleball private funding would cut to thirty thousand dollars and half, um, to fifteen thousand. And of course, we're looking at the rear less thirteen something thousand dollars in repaying the brand-new Lamborghini. And the North Natchez projects would obviously stay the same. So you can see, um, total project cost seventy thousand four hundred dollars. If we went this route, city's portion would be fifty-five thousand four hundred dollars, which we could potentially find some grant funding for that to help mitigate those costs. And in this scenario, private funding would increase from twenty-seven thousand to roughly thirty-five thousand to accommodate the two extra courts. And that's, we want to add you. Next slide. And we don't want to, uh, forget about the future expansion. We actually had a director of USDA Southern Mississippi make a site visit. There is adequate space for four more tennis courts at the North Natchez Park area, or four more? Potentially, potentially, not, the, the, there's pros and cons here, but we won't get into that for the sake of, of this meeting. Um, that would require some sort of agreement or understanding with the school board because where you see courts ten through thirteen, that is on school property. So basically...
Say that again, wh- what, at North Natchez Park? You're talking about using their property?
Okay, so I, I really didn't want to include this slide because I didn't want to muddy the waters, but, but...
That's another discussion.
Th- this is, yes, this is a completely separate project. This is just looking ahead to what is potentially available through some serious USDA dollars. Uh, next slide. All right, so let's pack the house. I mean, I, I think we have the facilities in place. It, it's time for us to, to maximize on that.
Alderman Maroney, you have your hand up.
It seems to me, of course, I'd like to hear what the pickleball votes have to say. But it sure seems like option B, there's some little pluses to that in that you get more pickleball courts. They're kind of off in their own kind of separate pickleball area, and I think that's where they're playing pickleball now.
Get it?
Right, and then it keeps all the tennis kind of over in the tennis area. We don't have to redo the courts that we just built. For a hand, it's less expensive. I don't see any plus to, to option A. It seems like option B is a winner all the way around.
Would you like to make that motion?
I would like to.
All we're, all we're doing is, we're, we're proceeding with gathering estimates.
Pardon?
We're gathering estimates, that's all we're doing.
We had to decide which option A or which option B so that I could...
Alderman Hall is Chair of Recreation. Uh, would you like to make that motion? Okay, Alderman Maroney, do you want to make that motion?
My motion would be that if we're gonna get estimates, let's get estimates for option B.
Okay, a motion has been made by Alderman Maroney to get estimates on option B, so we have that. Uh, seconded by Alderman Smith. Discussion? Alderman Irving?
That's, if, I, option B, that's, I was trying to see that they're still including North Natchez.
Yes, yes, it does, it does, for the sake of, of, of space on this particular slide.
Okay.
But it is definitely...
Okay.
Top priority.
There will be resurfacing.
It will be included, it, it will be included in the fifty-five thousand four hundred, I think it's the same one, but...
It is, I saw that, I just didn't see it.
Do we have any further discussion? We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. I have to say, that's one of the best presentations I've ever seen.
It's been two months in a row.
Um, Mr. Porter, thank you. What a great job you did. Uh, Mr. Tingle? We are so grateful to have me, uh, Tingle, here as our city planner.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Send, send, and, uh, thank you, everyone, for being here. Um... Send the media.
Oh, yeah.
Just a couple of words.
All right, Mr. Tingle, we have the...
Yes, uh, it's matching, uh, permission to advertise for public hearing for rezoning of, uh, two oh eight Madison Street. This is map number forty-one dash one eleven B dash twenty-five. Um, depending on the time of the advertisement, uh, we, the Board of Aldermen will be able to take up this matter at its second meeting of September.
Second, eighth, second.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Hall. Discussion?
I think this is something that needs to be done for long term.
It's already been unanimously approved by the planning commission. We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Tingle. Next item, Chief of Police. I, I tell you. Thank you for enduring to the last report.
Absolutely. Um, I'm here to ask the board for their approval to accept a private donation from a citizen who wishes to remain anonymous to purchase a K-9 for the police department. Um, the amount of the donation is fourteen thousand dollars, and that's to cover the cost of a K-9 and body armor to, you know, ensure the dog's safety.
So move.
Check.
Thank you.
Alderman Irving made the motion, seconded by Alderman Maroney.
Yep.
All right, and we'll have discussion, Alderman Irving.
I just want to say to whoever the donor is, so help me, no, but we thank you, because that extra body is what you get.
Absolutely, yes, and our current K-9 is a couple of years old, and he's getting slower, so we really did need one, and when he came forward, I was like, yes.
Very much, we think.
Will that include training?
Yes.
Uh, so grateful to that donor.
Yes.
We have such a generous community.
We do, we, we have a great community, and when we look at things that happen outside, you know, and we see the support that we get here in Natchez, I'm just happy to be here.
It's amazing, it's amazing. We'll call for the question. Oh, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, we're now city official reports. Alderman Hall?
No report.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Uh...
No.
No report, thank you, Alderman Smith. Uh, Alderman Irving?
Okay, well, I do have a report.
Okay.
Mr. Johnson, I started off with Mr. Johnson. I was gonna ask, um, to both, I would need in memory of, um, great cows. And now we can add Sonia Brown Frazier to that as well. Um, I also want to say publicly, congratulations to Alderman Frazier and Mrs. Shirley Frazier on fifty years of marriage. And, um, I pray and hope that they have much, many years and many blessed years to come. Um, Mr. Mayor? Excuse me, um, I want to ask, and I have written here about the ordinance and our ordinance committee, um, to put on, uh, more teeth with adjudicated property, um, with LLC purchasing properties and and not maintaining the property. Um, so it's still, it kind of broke the grass and LLC's purchased property. It still remained with overgrowth of grass, trees, there is no one to contact, and this is what has been shared back from our, um, our, um, our, um, code enforcement, okay, director, has shared that, that there's no contact information. We've done this over the years, Mr. Best didn't have to share it. It's just reaching out. They won't even maintain their property. And so we got to find a way, because all this still adds to us. We've limited our amount of money in the budget for, um, code enforcement to do any demolition or, um, cleanup of any properties. So we need to be putting the pressure on someone, and if it's increasing, as, um, we went to MML, um, putting more teeth to the, the ordinance or the bill with MML, they will do, I even spoke out with Miss Sherry, and she said, Felicia, that's something that we need to work on locally as well. So if we have the local support, then we can continue submitted. And other cities are doing the same thing as well. Other cities are. Um, my second...
Yes, Alderman.
What are you asking?
What I'm asking is that, um, we, because we, we don't have anything in place when it comes to LLC purchasing property here in the city of Natchez. And so I was asking that when they do purchase, is their responsibility to maintain those properties that they pay those taxes on? Otherwise, it falls on the city.
We can turn to you.
Yeah, I didn't, I, I don't see anything, and, and because over and over, I've had the discussion with Mr. Baldwin. Have we, again, adding pressure so that when we can do what? Get some better results, because now we're not getting anything. And we can look through the community and see the results. When nothing is done, we deal with the overgrowth of grass. I don't want a person living near that property to deal with that. Well, I don't want it for myself, and I don't want it for others, because it does create a hazard. It becomes a safety issue.
Like anyone else, though, they're to, they're on to get letters.
But they don't adhere to anything with the letters.
We'll start.
So we have the authority now to go above, to go to municipal court.
Okay.
That, so it's not, we, we are, we've taken steps to do that.
Okay, all right. I'm just wanting to say that...
We discussed it at our last meeting with the new, with, um, that law.
See, and I, we need, that's why it's so important here.
Yeah, we, we discussed it at, at the last meeting.
But I asked for the physical copies so that I...
Just a minute, a minute.
Okay, and then my next request is, um, is Cable One or Sparklight and all the utilities so that we can get, um, um, an idea of how they can take on that responsi- that shared responsibility, that it's not all public works, that it's Entergy, um, Cable One or Sparklight, um, AT&amp;T, these, I don't know whether or not you are, and you probably haven't focused on it as well as I have, but when you see a lot of kudzu and it's up the poles, it's the brand-new lights that Entergy has put out that illuminate out, they're covered. They don't serve a purpose anymore. And so...
We need to...
It provides, and so I was just gonna ask, you know, can we, you know, request a meeting of some kind so we can provide that? Because it's throughout our entire city. It's not my ward only, it's throughout the entire city that I observe this. Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Alderman Hall?
Yes, sir, one, one thing I do, if it's in my ward, I call Mr. Rutter. He is our liaison with Entergy. He take, he takes those calls. He makes those calls for energy to have that removed from wires. And I have a light with the same problem, the kudzu is cutting the light.
When you look down Arlington Street, and you go in that curve down there, the kudzu is almost leaving a, um, and they, um, the eighteen would shouldn't be coming to our neighborhood, but any SUV that's tall, you know, it's, it's, it's hitting there.
Bring it on us, and then they take care of it.
It's been there for a while, and I have said this often, I have.
If you'll, if you'll report to me, um, I'll, I'll see what I...
Well, I'll give you my list.
Okay, okay.
Exactly.
Alderman Maroney, you have, uh, certainly.
It's my understanding that all the poles actually belong to Entergy, so I think it would fall on Entergy.
It should.
But wouldn't involve AT&amp;T or Sparklight, everybody else would all be in it. Because I think they actually own the poles, and then others just have a right to, to use them, but so, wouldn't it go there?
We, we concerned with...
Sometimes AT&amp;T has...
I'm sorry, Alderman Hall?
Sometimes Mr. Rutter, he identifies them as AT&amp;T or Entergy. And he'll make that a point.
Let Jody know if that...
Let Mr. Rutter know.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Alderman Irving, you have the board.
I have one other thing. I attended a team signing this past weekend over at Natchez Middle School, and it was great representation, um, the Divine Nine, um, organizations of all the sororities and fraternities, um, put it on along with Concordia Parish School Board and the Natchez Adams County School Board. Uh, it was well-attended. Um, we need to see more of that without you. Um, and I, 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 um, it was truly a success. The overall event was truly a success.
Yeah.
There were breakout sessions where the youth went in, they talked about, um, different topics, one of them was bullying that I can actually recall. Got a great response. We had, uh, others were about resumes, those kinds of things, preparing them for the future and how to handle situations when they occur with them as well.
Yes.
So the overall event was truly a success.
Thank you, Alderman.
And that ends my report.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alderman Davis, your report. Okay, uh, Alderman Maroney?
No report.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we now come to the city clerk's report. Madam Clerk?
All right, um, first item I have is a request for approval of the second August twenty twenty five minisocket.
It was a pleasure to board. Motion made by Alderman Hall.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Maroney. Discussion?
Um, yes, I begin. It's, um, it's on page twenty-four of our planning socket, Burn Meets Insurance Agency, Grohl and Machine, uh, policy. What department is it in?
Um, you said it was on page thirty. That's coming out of local property.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, I'm sorry.
That was a bad one. That is, um, the insurance line item.
That's for our city board.
Insurance.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, we'll call for the question. Hall, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item?
Next item is a request for approval of the second August twenty twenty five minisocket.
Okay. Second.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Hall. Discussion? We'll call for the question. We'll call, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Madam Clerk, do you have anything else?
I do actually have a couple of things that, uh, I had to add last minute. Um, well, really, just one that requires action. Um, a request for permission to advertise for a public hearing on the budget to be held on September eighth at six P.M.
So...
A motion has been made by Alderman Irving and seconded by Alderman Hall. Discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Alderman Irving.
I, I just wanted to say, and thank you, because that is one of the other things. Now, I want to ask, when we have this next public, um, hearing, or would it be viewed and heard by the public? Because they called in, they were texting.
Uh, public hearing.
Okay, so...
Yes, a work session, um, special call meeting, generally, we don't, because the charter, where we aren't required to be on Facebook at all. We do it as a courtesy, but being that it is a public hearing, we're gonna treat it like, I, I would think it will be.
Because today, got a lot of calls, you couldn't hear, it was slow, so, you know, I'm just asking.
And I apologize, I actually told, uh, Ms. Brittany.
We're speaking, we're not speaking in our lights, and so that it carries out.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, further discussion? We'll call for the question. Hall, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries.
And then just a quick, uh, uh, um, uh, the public hearing, um, September eighth at six P.M. And then we will need to have a special call meeting on September fifteenth to actually adopt the budget. Um, and so we can discuss that at some point, what time, work space for everyone, except appointed.
You're asking for a public hearing on the eighth?
No, public hearing on the eighth, September eighth. And then we will need to have a special call meeting on the fifteenth, but I don't need action to set that right now. We can do that in the later day.
All right.
So you said the eighth for the public hearing, our board meeting is the ninth?
Mm-hmm. But we have to have the public hearing at least one week prior to approving the budget, and the last day to adopt the budget is the fifteenth.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything further?
That is it for me.
I do need to add one thing under your report. Um, it, 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 it really missed our last meeting, but our workforce development team went to a special... it really missed our last meeting, but our workforce development team went to a special conference last week in Jackson, uh, for workforce development, they go every year, it's a very important uh, one for, uh, uh, the state workforce development initiative, and we, uh, uh, need to approve their travel, they, I, I'm trying to remember, um, they left Tuesday and came back Thursday, I believe, of last week. And it's not on the agenda, but, um, I understand that we can approve that, um, you know, retrospectively.
Yes, we can.
Um-
We just approved it.
No, it's not on there. But we see to one of Williams.
Well, we have front of the expenditure, okay. So, Madam Clerk, the fact that it's on the mini docket, does that qualify?
It's on the mini plane docket.
Those, that's not the hotel.
The test was approved on the mini docket, but to have just an official record that y'all do approve that travel is not just the extent of the travel, then we can go-
I think we do need to spread on the medals. Thank you, Alderman Maroney has made the motion, Alderman Davis has seconded that motion. Uh, we'll call for the question. Uh, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. That was funded by their grant, and that is, uh, a very important, uh, training that they attend, and we are making great strides in workforce development, again, we will announce very soon another very large grant. We are going well above two million in grants for approval, we just started from scratch three years ago. So that's good. Uh, I understand we're pressing a hundred and fifty in enrollment in all our trades, and they'll be starting, I believe, September, early September at, um, at the Co-Link, Manchester Campus here. Um, everything from electrical to carpentry to plumbing, you just name it. And a lot of that information is on our website, or natchesworkforcedevelopment.com. All right, Madam Clerk, thank you. Uh, Mr. Attorney, do you have a report this evening?
No report.
All right, thank you. Uh, I, uh, I do have, I do have a couple of things, we, uh, we understand that the city pool, well, it's actually the Manchester Adams Aquatics Center, is scheduled to close on Monday. However, it had been represented, uh, to our senior citizens, uh, and Ms. Monroe, we've been privy to all these meetings and conversations, that it could remain open for the month of September for their morning exercise classes at the same schedule they've been keeping. We meant to make it, they make them start a little later because the mornings are now a little cooler, uh, but, uh, I would like to have a motion that we would, uh, and it would then be also presented to the county for them to make the same measure that the pool remained open for the month of September. Uh, under the same terms. Alderman Davis has made that motion, Alderman Irving has seconded that motion. And he, yes, Alderman-
It's just for the public as well, it should be open to the public.
I want to just tell you something, I agree, I believe it should be. This is, this is something that I actually discussed with the pool staff, and also I discussed this with the, uh, uh, with the county administrator and also member of the board supervisors, that we are paying staff to maintain the pool, and why should it only be open three months out of the year?
No, I mean, if we're gonna open it for a month of September, well, one group, it should be open to the-
The challenge is that some of the lifeguards are students who go back to school, and that is what was explained to me, is, uh, the challenge in getting, getting lifeguards when school is in session, some of the lifeguards actually are college students. Uh, but we certainly can have that conversation, uh, with them, and uh, I would say, Alderman Davis?
I amend.
If you would amend it and say that it should be open to the public as well during the month of September, uh, provided that good lifeguard, you know, coverage can be achieved.
Yeah, I'm gonna question the pool for the staff.
Yes.
Is there a staff gonna be there and get paid?
And as of right now, the staff, you know, we, uh, we are not having any open discussion of personnel matters at this time. So it's my understanding that the staff will, in fact, I understand the staff is working for the month of September.
What's the staff?
Yes, we have confirmed that. All right, I will call for the question, and, uh, we'll proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Um, also, this has kind of smoked up on us, but, uh, you know, Manchester will be hosting this fall meeting next year for the MRCTI, and, uh, I've been asked to make a presentation on behalf of Manchester at their meeting that's being held in two weeks in, uh, Twin Cities, Minnesota. And so, this is a two-night, uh, stay, leaving on the sixteenth, returning on the eighteenth. I need approval to make that trip. So move, motion made by Alderman Irving.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Davis, discussion? We'll call for the question.
All.
We'll proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. I will be returning on the eighteenth and then having to drive to Tupelo for the MML Board of Directors meeting. Uh, Alderman Smith, you are a member of the Board of Directors, are you also attending?
I don't know yet.
I'm, um, I would say let's go ahead and get the motion approved for you to attend, uh, in the event you can't, you know.
So move.
Motion has been made by Alderman Irving, and that would be for the mayor and also the mayor pro tempore. Uh, we are one of the few cities that asked two individuals serving on that, we were very grateful for that. Uh, Alderman Davis has made, has seconded that motion, we'll call for the question, call, we'll proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. I want everyone to know that also on the nineteenth, I will then be taking the city vehicle to Ocean Springs to represent the city of Manchester at the Fall Songwriters Festival, because, uh, we will be announcing that Manchester will be hosting the Songwriters Festival here the last weekend of January. However, due to our budget constraints, even though I have it in my current travel budget, I am actually, other than driving the city car, I was planning for this trip out of my own pocket. But I do want you to know that, um, I will be on the cusp of, just want you to be aware of that. Um, the, uh, the next thing, and you, you all have a folder of those individuals who provided their resumes, expecting and interest and serving on the board of the NCPC, Manchester Convention and Promotion Commission, the Visit Manchester Board. We, uh, very, we have one vacancy, very likely will soon have two more, and so we are considering three appointments. I believe the Board of Aldermen has expressed a desire to have everyone come before the board, and we have made that possible for this Thursday at four P.M. We will have a special call meeting in the board. It will be to conduct interviews of those who have applied. Um, the, uh, um, uh, we can have individuals call in if they can't be there in person. And Alderman Irving, we chose four o'clock to try to accommodate you.
Okay.
Yes, Alderman Irving?
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, and what date is that?
It will be this Thursday at four P.M.
I won't be there.
At four P.M.
Thank you. I, I want to ask, when did we find out it will be three, uh, well, only one vac-
We actually had this at our last meeting, and the motion was-
Well, we had one vacancy and then we-
But if you'll recall, at the last meeting, I also said that we anticipate that there will be two more, and so we are going to have three actually to fill. And I actually did receive word from, uh, Alderman Smith that she is anticipating in the near future submitting her letter, and we also understand that another member is, is planning to do the same. So we, we are trying to get in motion.
Extend the date of those, or how did that?
No, no, our motion was that we would allow a two-week window, this is at the board.
Twenty-fifth, we did.
And, and we did, and, and Friday was that date, and so we have had these six that submitted. The deadline was Friday, it was publicized, and these are our applicants. Yes, Alderman.
We have one vacancy, so I think we-
Why?
We, uh, the board can make, you know, the board can, um, can make those decisions.
And you're one, you only have one vacancy.
Well, we can discuss that, but we are, we're having, we're having interviews this, uh, this Thursday at, at four P.M. Now, it's not necessary that we make a decision Thursday, but I believe it is very important that we have interviews. Um, I would, uh, suggest any alderman who can't be there Thursday, you have these resumes, call these individuals and talk to them yourself, because it's very important, uh, actually, uh, I, um, I have been asked to move this along because the, we have to, they're ready to step down and they want to know that we're moving forward in the process. Well, we can, um, they, they can, we, uh, uh, so that is informational, I have provided you the resumes, and I've given you the update that in accordance with our motion that was passed two weeks ago, we are interviewing and considering three appointments, and we will have interviews this Thursday at four P.M. And that will be here, it will not be live streaming, but it will be an open meeting. With that said, um, I want to now, uh, just share, um, I actually have been invited to attend, uh, and I'm just going to go up on, at my own expense, but the Mississippi Book Festival is being held, um, on the second weekend of September, and at nine A.M., the Mississippi Book Festival is going to honor author Greg Isles, and I've been asked to be there to represent Manchester at that ceremony. It will be held at nine A.M. on the front steps of the Mississippi Capitol. Um, we all, uh, feel a deep loss in our community at the passing of Greg Isles. And I will say it to, tonight, I've said it before and I'll say it again, um, Greg was someone who truly loved this city, and he also loved freedom and justice, and he was not afraid to speak out when it was necessary to speak out for the right things. And he was a proponent of moving Manchester forward in such a unified way. And I think we are a richer place and a better city for having had Greg Isles as a citizen. I also was addicted, and have been addicted for years to his writing. Uh, I have referred to it as, 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 with friends as a, an addiction that could be dangerous because I would lose sleep because I couldn't go to sleep until I finished the book. And, uh, so our prayers are with his, um, beloved wife Carolyn and their child, also his, uh, children, um, just such a precious family. Uh, his brother, his, uh, and all of his love kids, and all of these four kids. Um, and so, it is already been said, I think we need to have a motion.
Before we do that, that's another thing, because it brings to mind that the, um, topic of books and how important reading is to everyone and their growth. And when you can't, and I know this is, I've talked to Greg about this. One of the things I've always thought and deep thought, you know, you couldn't leave Manchester, you can read through books. I mean, there are so many ways to learn about the world and to expand your own eyes and power, and so I'm like, kind of the new bookstore that's gonna be open in here.
Oh.
But one of the things that we can all do to support them, until they're open, you can walk in in person, you can order online from them and order your books, instead of Amazon, get them, um, on their, on their, um, site. So they're on Facebook, I think it's, Jamie might know, I think you can order directly from that, yes.
Dixon Books?
Yes.
What is the website?
It's Dixon Books, I think.
Dixon Books.
And you can find it on Facebook.
We can easily.
So go, and their website's like up in their coaching order.
So I'm, I'm so excited, we're gonna have a bookstore.
Isn't it appropriate that, um,
I'm sure schools would be excited to.
Greg, I, 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 in fact, Greg knew this was coming, and so I know, um, I'm smiling now. Well, with that said, also, we again express our sympathies to our chief, Robert Arrington, in the loss of his sister, and so we, and, and remind me, uh, Sonya?
Brown Fraser?
Uh, uh, Fraser. Fraser. And so, let us, on the minutes, actually, um, spread that we are closing in honor of these two individuals and every of them, and I'll now entertain that motion to adjourn. Motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion, we'll call for a question. We'll proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. We'll now have a long silence for those who, who we have mentioned in their lives. Father, we thank you for your grace and your comfort, and we lift up these families to you in your precious name, in the name of Jesus, amen. Thank you, we stand in here.